Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alodium Watch Parade in Monte, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC. I am the Chief Judge, Counselor Court. We want to welcome everybody back to this ANPAC study session. Today's subject matter, today is talking about subject matter. Today is part two of talking about subject matter. And what is the subject matter right now? The subject matter is the JAB. But really, what is truly the real subject matter? Jurisdiction. In order to talk jurisdiction, that means you want to be talking government of that jurisdiction. If you're talking government, that means you're talking state. And if you're talking state, you're talking constitution. So we'll keep talking about that subject matter today. How we put all of this together in terms of dealing with subject matter when you're dealing with de facto state government. So today is Class 27, Class 27. What did we learn in Class 26? We started understanding how do you use Counselor Court when you're dealing with an application of difference. An applicant, application of difference is nothing but subject matter. But what is application of difference? We'll talk about that today. Keep in mind, today is a continuation from Class Number 26, talking about the JAB, alright? So if we usually open up, let's get back to our mission and vision statement, right? So our mission and vision statement is the mission and vision statement is to create the United States of Morocco again, right? And how do we do that more? Let's be redundant. It requires discipline. Discipline determines our destination. And what is the destination? To create the United States of Morocco again. The only way we're going to fulfill that provision is for us to come into the consciousness and have the discipline to study international law. And when you study international law, you quickly understand constitutions are part and parcel to international law. And Moors need their own Moors constitutions in order to create the states. Moors have to now get back to what they call statehood, which is the supreme law of the land. Why do I say statehood, supreme law of the land? It's because in the Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, says Moors must come back to a Moroccan government. So Moors now are coming back into a Moroccan government here in northwest of Mexico, alright? So, here is the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of the year seventeen eighty-six, eighty-seven, fully ratified in seventeen eighty-seven between Morocco and the United States of America, alright? So, what are we learning in Article twenty-four? I mention this quite often as it relates to an application of difference, right? So if you're reading this, mothers, can we go ahead and read the Article twenty-four?
Article twenty-four. "If any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms. And if a war shall break out..."
Stop. Okay, Moors at home, keep in mind, Article twenty-four is basically in two parts. You could really say three parts, but it's two parts clearly, alright? So we're going to stick to the first part. What is the first part? We're going to talk about... So what does Article twenty-four say? "If any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement and until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms." So we're talking about an application. So there's a difference of application. How do you deal with a difference of application? That is the question. So what is the difference of application? It's what you call subject matter. A difference of application creates the subject matter. What is the subject matter? More than likely, it's a de facto government pretending to be a public government trying to utilize their jurisdiction on Moors. But they can utilize their jurisdiction on ipso jumorant subjects, but they cannot utilize their jurisdiction with Moors nationals who possess a state and constitution because that claims the jurisdiction of the land. So when Moors are talking about subject matters in relation to the JAB, what are we talking about? A difference of application. And how do you deal with that difference of application? There must be made an arrangement. What's the arrangement? First, we're dealing with what you call your state of facts and judicial notice. That puts on the record to start establishing how are you making your arrangements, right? So we talked about that. Okay, so Article twenty-four. "If any difference shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement and until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms." So what are we talking about, Moors, when we start talking about an application? So you must understand, what is an application? An application can be anything from legislation by the de facto government. An application can be what Moors are putting on the record as it relates to our constitution. An application can be any type of contract. An application is two different documents that are now competing with each other. So United States of America, who's a party, and Moroccans are now putting two different types of applications on the record, which one prevails? There's a difference of application. Moors are saying, let's use the treaty. The United States, not confusing, United States of America, is using legality of statutes. So which one prevails? Okay, the only way to know which one prevails, now you have to go to Counselor Court. Counselor Court deals with those applications. Remember, the application is just a proper written instrument. It's a documentation. Such as when people will now be receiving documentation says they got to get the JAB. Well, that's an application. That's a document. That's a proper written instrument. Okay, how do you deal with that application? Well, Moors have an application, which is their constitution, as well as their bylaws, as well as several declarations that they have acceded to through their session through the state government. You use all those applications and your bylaws to deal with the application from the de facto United States trying to enforce a subject matter jurisdiction of a JAB because they got documentation through their so-called CDC health department that says you got to take a JAB. Well, guess what? Their JAB has nothing to do with Moors state jurisdiction. Their JAB only has something to do with their citizens of the United States. Because they're no longer citizens of United States of America. The United States of America is buoyed because it is bankrupt and soft. Now they're operating through the United States, pretending to be the United States of America, okay? Alright, what are we talking about? We must now put together what's called a friendly arrangement, right? So the application shall be made for an arrangement and until that application shall be rejected, so what happens? How do we reject the JAB? How do we, how do the Moors states reject the JAB? Well, the solution is easy. Now you must understand this. Here's what we must understand. We're talking JAB. JAB is subject matter. You don't start with subject matter. All Moors must understand, you start with jurisprudence. What is jurisprudence? Your nationality, but you should already have that box checked. Once you check the box, you go right into jurisdiction because the JAB comes from someone claiming a jurisdiction. Who's claiming a jurisdiction? A de facto state of, et cetera. Trying to force Moors to take a JAB. But your jurisdiction equals Moors states. When you claim a jurisdiction, do what? Your Counselor Court, because the Moors Counselor Court comes from the constitution of your Moors state. The Moors constitution is the other application that now rejects the JAB. So Moors must understand, the JAB is subject matter. First, you start with jurisprudence. Then jurisdiction. And to deal with the proper venue, because the proper venue deals with what? The rejection. The rejection is through Counselor Court before you even get to the JAB. First thing you have to do is talk about who's got the jurisdiction before you start talking about subject matter, okay? So jurisdiction equals Moors states. And the proper venue, if you're dealing with a difference of application, the difference of the application can be rejected through Counselor Court. So that's why I say number four. If people are talking about the application of difference, what's the application difference? Which is the subject matter, they're talking about the JAB. The JAB is a piece of paper they're trying to enforce upon Moors. These are Moors, these are de facto states and their employers, the corporations, trying to force the Moors to take a JAB.
So the application of difference is the difference, the difference of the two forms?
Yes.
The two different applications.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Alright. Alright, so therefore, first thing Moors should be talking about is, okay, what was the jurisdiction? Use a proper venue, which is Counselor Court. When Moors have Counselor Court, now Counselor Court can deal with that application of difference, okay? But you're also just simply dealing with subject matter. We just have to be talking about the JAB. We could be talking about IRS, we could be talking about traffic tickets, labor, et cetera. But we just have to be talking about the JAB, the subject matter. So Moors have to always start with box number one. To set up box number two, to check the box of box number three, to deal with Counselor Court, alright? So what are we openly talking about? We're talking about the circle seven, state of facts, which are these exhibits, including the judicial notice. So Moors at home, study, should understand, here's what you need. You need the circle seven, state of facts and judicial notice. And keep in mind, ANPAC has a forty-page document that deals with the state of facts. And we'll share that document with dejure Moors state governments. Exhibit A, Constitution. Exhibit B, State seal. Exhibit C, Provincial state flag. Exhibit D, Empire Morocco flag. Exhibit E, Allegiance and Oath document. Exhibit F, Public operation video, which is your seven documents creating the circle seven that does what? Deals with the difference of the application. Then Counselor Court can reject the JAB because Counselor Court has the original jurisdiction. The JAB is only as good as jurisdiction. We're going to learn about that today. Watch. How is it that the United States of America is claiming jurisdiction over Moors? We must always remember this, must be redundant. How is they think they have jurisdiction over the Counselor Court of Moors? Okay, what I have up here is the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, okay? For a point of reference, this is the forty-first Congress, Session Two, it's going to be Chapter two fifty-four. So you'll go down to Chapter two fifty-four. So if I can have mother read the title of this chapter, just the title.
An Act to amend the naturalization laws and against the same and for other purposes.
Okay, now we're going to go down to Section Seven. So you're going to go to Chapter two fifty-four, Section Seven. Okay, mother, if I can have you to read Section Seven.
Section Seven, and be it further enacted, that the naturalization laws are hereby extended to aliens of African nativity and to persons of African descent.
Okay, so what happened? Through an Act, or what they call a Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, which is fraud through ex parte, because they made a ULA decision to make Moors naturalized citizens, i.e. aliens, i.e. denizens, denizens of the United States of America. This was in eighteen seventy, this is before the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, before they changed to United States. So the United States of America is guilty of making Moors citizens of the United States of America. It's fraud. So Section Seven, circle seven. Section Seven, circle seven. And be it further enacted, that the naturalization laws are hereby extended to aliens of African nativity and to persons of African descent. They threw the Moors underneath the bus. So how do you deal with that? That's Section Seven. What are we doing with our circle seven state of facts? Listen, Moors. Circle seven, state of facts, the facts of your state renounces and denounces and does what? Rejects. It rejects. Your circle seven state of facts and judicial notice, but you're giving them notice of your status. It rejects Section Seven of the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, Chapter two fifty-four, Section Seven. What are we doing? We're using what's called counterintelligence. We're now reclaiming our own sovereignty. We're reclaiming our own dejure status. As it says in the Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, alright? So we're coming back into a Moroccan government. As related to the Act of Al-Dusers, it says we come back into a Sharifan government, a Madzin government, a Moroccan law government to deal with Moors and to deal with foreigners. We're coming back into the government, okay? So once again, they use Section Seven to pull us into their jurisdiction fraudulently. How do we get out of their jurisdiction? We get out of it in our heads with our head by utilizing circle seven. Back on them, okay? This is called restoration, post-laminium. Reparations, repatriation instead of expatriation. So what do they do? Section Seven, they need us expatriates of being Moors. What are we doing as Moors now for our state provincial governments? Now we're going into what's called a repatriation of correcting our status.
By metarfolia.
Claiming our sovereignty. There you go. Okay, Moors at home. We're going to take the time to look at a state, de facto state statute on the Supreme Court of the United States, not confusing, United States of America. We're going to look at some of their steridesices, their res judicata, that what they call their precedent on the record in dealing with a vaccination, okay? We're getting ready to study the Supreme Court of the United States, not the United States of America, in dealing with vaccinations. Why are we going to study this? Remember I said, Moors, Moors must stop studying state statutes of de facto United States. Stop studying that. Why you stop studying it? Because Moors was using it as a defense for themselves. Now Moors must be in a proper mindset to understand, if you're going to look at a state statute of de facto United States, then you must look at it only as a point of reference. So now you can start understanding, how are they using government to now defend their state rights? Moors must start studying government. So let's study their document and look for the government in the document. Not necessarily the subject matter of the JAB, but how are they using government to defend the state rights, okay? So this is the United States Supreme Court, says U.S. Supreme Court. When you look at any documentation coming from the de facto Supreme Court of the United States, this is how they put it on there, U.S. Supreme Court, in all caps. Letting you know it's a corporation. Now I got this reference point from Justia, U.S. Supreme Court. Okay, that's a website. Jacobson versus Massachusetts, here's their codified language, one ninety-seven, U.S. eleven, nineteen oh five is the year. There's a reference point. I put it now onto Word doc, that way we can, you know, use it more efficiently, alright? So, keep in mind, this is Jacobson versus Massachusetts of the year nineteen oh five. Why are we going over this? It's because this is a subject matter fact, it's about the smallpox vaccination of the year nineteen oh five. Moors must be cognizant of this to understand, how do you use state rights? You're going to learn in this, to give you a quick brief. Jacobson was a citizen of the state of Massachusetts, okay? He was a citizen of the state of Massachusetts, okay? Which was just a de facto jurisdiction. Jacobson didn't want to take the smallpox vaccination. So he took it to court. He took it all the way from Massachusetts, all the way up to Supreme Court of the United States, okay? So that must be known. So the subject matter is smallpox vaccination, as we're reading that, keep that in mind. So this was argued December sixth, nineteen oh four, and decided February twentieth, nineteen oh five. So now we're going to read the syllabus, which is the judgment, the opinion. Okay, mother, if you can read this for me, the syllabus.
The United States does not derive any of its substantive powers from the preamble of the Constitution. It cannot exert any power to secure the declared objects of the Constitution unless, apart from the preamble, such power be found in or can properly be implied from some express delegation in the instrument. While the spirit of the Constitution is to be respected, not less than its letter, the spirit is to be collected chiefly from its words. While the exclusion of evidence in a state court in a case involving the constitutionality of a state statute may not strictly present a federal question, this court may consider the rejection of such evidence upon the ground of incompetency or immateriality under the statute as showing its scope and meaning in the opinion of the state court. The police power of a state embraces such reasonable regulations relating to matters completely within its territory and not affecting the people of other states established directly by legislative enactment, as will protect the public health and safety. While a local regulation, even based on the acknowledged police power of a state, must always yield in case of conflict with the exercise by the general government of any power it possesses under the Constitution, the mode or manner of exercising its police power is wholly within the discretion of the state so long as the Constitution of the United States is not contravened or any right granted or secured thereby is not infringed or not exercised in such an arbitrary and oppressive manner as to justify the interference of the courts to prevent wrong and oppression. The liberties secured by the Constitution of the United States does not import an absolute right in each person to be at all times and in all circumstances wholly freed from restraint, nor is it an element in such liberty that one person or a minority of persons residing in any community and enjoying the benefits of its local government shall have power to dominate the majority when supported in their state action by the authority of the state. It is within the police power of a state to enact a compulsory vaccination law and it is for the legislature and not for the courts to determine. Page one ninety-seven, U.S. twelve. In the first instance, whether vaccination is or is not the best mode for the prevention of smallpox and the protection of the public health, there are, there being obvious reasons for such exception. The fact that children, under certain circumstances, are accepted from the operation of the law does not deny the equal protection of the laws to adults if the statute is applicable equally to all adults in like condition. The highest court of Massachusetts, not having held that the compulsory vaccination law of that state establishes the absolute rule that an adult must be vaccinated even if he is not a fit subject at the time of that vaccination, would seriously injure his health or cause his death. This court holds that as to an adult residing in the community and a fit subject for a vaccination, the statute is not valid as in derogation of any of the rights of such person under the Fourteenth Amendment. This case involves the validity under the Constitution of the United States of certain provisions in the statutes of Massachusetts relating to vaccination. The revised laws of that commonwealth, C seventy-five subsection one thirty-seven, prove that the Board of Health of a city or town, if in its opinion is necessary for the public health or safety, shall require and enforce the vaccination and revaccination of all the inhabitants thereof and shall provide them with means of free vaccination. Whoever being over twenty-one years of age and not under guardianship refuses or neglects to comply with such a requirement shall forfeit five dollars.
Oh.
An exception is made in favor of children who present a certificate signed by a registered physician that they are unfit subjects for vaccination, subsection one thirty-nine. Proceeding under the above statutes, the Board of Health of the City of Cambridge, Massachusetts, on the twenty-seventh day of February nineteen oh two, adopted the following regulation. Whereas smallpox has been prevalent to some extent in the City of Cambridge and still continues to increase, and whereas it is necessary for the speedy extermination of that, of the disease, that all persons be protected by vaccination.
Not protected.
That all persons not protected by vaccination shall be vaccinated. And whereas, in the opinion of the Board, the public health and safety require the vaccination or revaccination of all the inhabitants of Cambridge, be it ordered that, page one ninety-seven, U.S. thirteen, all the inhabitants of the city who have not been successfully vaccinated since March one, eighteen ninety-seven, be vaccinated or revaccinated. Subsequently, the Board adopted an additional regulation empowering a named physician to enforce the vaccination of persons as directed by the Board at its special meeting of February twenty-seven. The above regulations being enforced, the plaintiff in error, Jacobson, was proceeded against by a criminal complaint in one of the inferior courts of Massachusetts. The complaint charged that on the seventeenth day of July nineteen oh two, the Board of Health of Cambridge, being of the opinion that it was necessary for the public health and safety, required the vaccination and revaccination of all the inhabitants thereof who had not been successfully vaccinated since the first day of March eighteen ninety-seven and provided them with the means of free vaccination and that the defendant, being over twenty-one years of age, had not under guardianship, refused and neglected to comply with such requirement. The defendant, having been arraigned, pleaded not guilty. The government put in evidence the above regulations adopted by the Board of Health and made proof tending to show that his chairman informed the defendant that by refusing to be vaccinated, he would incur the penalty provided by the statute and would be prosecuted therefore. That he offered to vaccinate the defendant without expense to him and that the offer was declined and the defendant refused to be vaccinated. The prosecution, having introduced no other evidence, the defendant made numerous offers of proof, but the trial court ruled that each and all of the facts offered to be proved by the defendant were immaterial and excluded all proof of them. The defendant, standing upon his offers of proof and introducing no evidence, asked numerous instructions to the jury, among which were the following. That section one thirty-seven of Chapter seven, seventy-five of the revised laws of Massachusetts were in derogation of the rights secured to the defendant by the preamble to the Constitution of the United States. Page one ninety-seven, U.S. fourteen. States intended to subvert and defeat the purposes of the Constitution as declared in its preamble. That the section referred to was in derogation of the rights secured to the defendant by the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and especially of the clauses of that amendment providing that no state shall make or enforce any law upriding the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor deprive any person of liberty, life, or property without due process of law. nor deprive any person of liberty, life, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws, and that said, said section was opposed to the spirit of the Constitution. Each of the defendant's prayers for instructions was rejected, and he duly accepted. The defendant requested the court, but the court refused to instruct the jury to return a verdict of not guilty, and the court instructed the jury, in substance, that if they believe the evidence introduced by the Commonwealth and were satisfied beyond a reasonable doubt that the defendant was guilty of the offense charged in the complaint, they would be warranted in finding a verdict of guilty. A verdict of guilty was thereupon returned. The case was then continued for the opinion of the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts. That court overruled all the defendant's exceptions, sustained the action of the trial court, and thereafter pursuant to the verdict of the jury, he was sentenced by the court to pay a fine of five dollars, and the court ordered that he stand committed until the fine was paid.
Alright, thank you, mother. Okay, let's go to the beginning. Okay, now that we're, we're back at the beginning of this U dot S dot Supreme Court document, why are we reading this? Keep in mind, Moors, we're not reading this for Moors to use this as a defense. We're reading this so you can understand subject matter on how the states and the federal government are going to enforce the vaccination upon its so juror Moore subjects. How they end up being its so juror Moore subject? Well, we learned that through the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, the United States fraudingly put Moors into the jurisdiction of the United States of America. Right after that, in eighteen seventy-one, they created the United States Corporation, and they've been operating through the United States ever since, fraudulently, okay? So why are we studying this? So Moors can understand, they're gonna stick you with that jab because Supreme Court has already ruled that the state has the right to stick you with the jab. Why? Because it's states' rights. Let's use an example. In the jurisdiction of Florida's corporation, their governor there, who's a de facto governor of a corporation, said that no one in the state of Florida corporation has to take the jab. But right next door, let's say in Georgia, state of Georgia jurisdiction corporation, maybe they might have to take the jab. Why? States' rights. Who oversees the state? The governor. Well, who's the governor to get his delegation authority from? The Constitution and the state, as well as the legislators, right? So what are we talking about right now? Moors must understand, if you wanna avoid subject matter of a jab, we have to start understanding government. So the purpose of reading this is to start pointing out to you that they're using government to support the fact they get to stick people with the jab. So what should Moors learn from this as I go through this document again? If you have a government, if we have a Moors government, then we can create our own jurisdiction and say rejection to the jab. Keeping in mind, the United States is gonna continuously keep pushing this jab year in and year out. We're gonna learn in here, they're talking about vaccinations and revaccinations, okay? Alright, let's go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, mother.
And it might be silly, but the jab, the jab would be used from the United States for a subject matter, such for someone that does not have a nationality would be the one that would have the repercussions of being jabbed.
Yes.
Like Pope would, like, yeah, you might think you're a Moore, but you're not really a Moore because, you know, you are still natural o- naturalize o- wow, naturalize.
Naturalize.
Yes, yes, natural. Yes, sheesh.
Naturalize.
Okay, natural, naturalize. I can't even speak today.
No worries.
So, within this law, a person that is not a Moore would be subject to being jabbed all the time as they're going up here with no nationality.
And no government.
And, well, if you don't have a government, of course, then you don't have jurisdiction to be within that government.
Correct.
So every time you go to court, thinking that you're fighting, even though you might think that you are a national, but without that government, you will be jabbed each and every time that you go to court.
That is correct.
Until you have your government backing you.
Correct.
And then you could go under that jurisdiction.
Correct. And this is precedents since nineteen oh five. You must understand, they can force the jab on any citizen of the United States 'cause Supreme Court says so, alright? Can the Supreme Court overturn this someday? The so-called citizens of the United States stand up and come together and collective and fight? Yeah, but right now, it's well settled principles, states' rights. So my point is.
So is this what's been taking place all this long?
Yes.
With the Moors that are claiming their nationality without a government?
Correct.
When they're going to court and fighting, they're getting jabbed.
Correct. 'Cause they're still citizens of the United States until they come back into a Moroccan government.
Which causes the difference of the application.
Correct. 'Cause now you have a state, more state government constitution versus the Constitution of, of the de facto state of the United States. So what's the proper venue to deal with an application of difference? 'Cause you're trying to figure out which, which application you use? Well, the answer is simple, let's talk jurisdiction. 'Cause jurisdiction, it Moors, how a Moore state becomes a jurisdiction. Now, the proper venue to deal with it is because the court.
Within our court of Morocco.
Yes.
And not under the United States.
That's correct.
Court of law.
Correct.
Mississippi court.
Yes, 'cause they've already proven on the record they're going to jab you. Only way you can prevent the jab, you must understand the difference of how to use cause of court to your advantage. That's the rejection.
Sign me up, sir, sign me up.
Yes. Alright. Okay, so we're gonna go through this document relatively quickly, alright? Why do I have certain words in a box? You must understand, when we watch that little clip, one minute fifty-four seconds of the Wizard of Oz. The wizard is a compound word for wise words, but they're using a negative spell. So Moors must also use wise words in a positive way through common law. And what's the common law? Understanding Moore's steez. And those Moore's steez came from your nationality. Your nationality, nationality creates the common law. Immediately, just through your blood pedigree. But then you must understand politics and create the Moore's steez. When you develop the Moore's steez with your Constitution, that can now set up the constant court, and through constant court, you use wise words that are positive words under jurisprudence and common law. We're gonna talk about that. So everywhere you see I have these boxes, I'm pointing out to you, Moors gotta start looking for the government in these documents. Stop looking at it for the subject matter. How are they using the steez to enforce the jab? So Moors start learning how to use the steez, okay? The United States does not derive any of its substantive powers from the preamble of the Constitution. So Moors should have a preamble of their own Constitution. It cannot exert any power to secure the declared objects of the Constitution. What is the Supreme Court using right now as their delegation authority? They're using Constitution. Moors need a Constitution for their state. Unless, apart from the preamble, where's the preamble coming from? The Constitution. Such power be found or can properly be implied from some express delegation in the instrument. What's the instrument? That's the application, which is the Constitution they're talking about. The application. The application. The application is the Constitution that Moors are missing right now. That's the first application that sets up the jurisdiction of the Moore's steez. That's the first application. That's the friendly application, the Constitution. The Constitution is the proper written instrument. That must be understood, that is the application. While the spirit of the Constitution, which is the application, is to be respected, less than its letter, the spirit is to be collected chiefly from its words. You see that? Words. The Wizard of Oz, the wizard, wise words, wizard, wise words, compound word. You, Moors must use wise words of their Constitution, which is the proper written instrument that deals with the proper application to do what? In case you need to reject. 'Cause all their applications are de facto. So that's what Moors should understand. Look how they open up, that de facto judge is writing this. This is his syllabus. Where is he deriving his delegation authority orders? Constitution. What should Moors learn from this thus far? We need a Constitution so we can derive our delegation authority from our Constitution to then deal with subject matter. For example, the jab. Because we're putting things in proper chronological order, jurisprudence, nationality, check the box. Then we start talking jurisdiction, jurisdiction is a Moore's state that has a Constitution. Now we use the proper venue, which is constant court, 'cause constant court is one of the judicial branches of the government to deal with any application of difference. What application of difference are we talking about right now? Constitution. That's the proper instrument, you see how they're writing? Nobudal Lee saying he gonna leave the Europeans here long enough to teach us government.
So the difference is the two constitutions.
Yes. Well stated, mother. So you got two separate constitutions. You got the Constitution for the United States of America that has been underlined by the so-called Constitution of the United States. We learned that in the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, that they created a brand-new government called the United States District of Columbia, Timmout Square, versus the de jure Constitution of Moors. But Moors don't have a Constitution of their own. Don't get me wrong, AIPAC has a Constitution with the purpose of AIPAC study sessions to get Moors to understand, they don't have one, then guess who gets to maintain the jurisdiction with the jab? The United States of America, they several fifty corporations, they're franchisees. So soon as Moors create the Moore's steez through their Constitution, the instrument is the Constitution. The instrument is the Constitution, which has words, positive words, which is the application of difference. Constitutions are the applications. While the exclusion of evidence in the state court, so we're talking court, do Moors have courts? No, so how are you going to reject the jab if we don't have courts? They're gonna use their courts to stick Moors. But Moors can reject. Moors can reject the injection through constant court. Constant court is the supreme law of the land, okay? While the exclusion of evidence in the state court in a case involving the constitutionality of a state, Moors need the constitutionality of their Moore's steez. We're learning from the Europeans, how you maintain your delegation authority comes through a Constitution that claims the jurisdiction. Statues may not strictly present a federal question. This court may consider the rejection of such evidence upon the ground of incompetency or immateriality under the statute. What does that mean, Moore? Listen to what he just said. Moore can say rejection to any of the corporate states of and say that their jab, which is subject matter, is immateriality. Under what? The Moore's constitutionality of their own states. Because we're claiming the jurisdiction. I'll say it again, the Moors can reject through the constitutionality of their state and say that the jab application that the de facto United States of America is trying to stick you with is immateriality. Why? Ain't got nothing to do with our jurisdiction. That's for your citizens of the United States or your citizens of the United States of America. Pick one, ain't got nothing to do with Moors. 'Cause Moors have their own jurisdiction under their Moore's state Constitution. You must have a Constitution. They opened up this document going right into the Constitution. Do Moors have a Constitution? But yeah, let me ask this question. What is the name of your state provincial government that has a Constitution? That is the answer to the test, Moors, to avoid the jab. But keep in mind, Moors, the jab is just subject matter. And subject matter is always number four. When we deal with number one, two, and three, it automatically takes care of the application of difference of whatever the subject matter is. It's just that easy. While the exclusion of the evidence in the state court in a case involving the constitutionality, so let's, let's do this. While the exclusion of evidence in the Moore's state courts, he can say Moore's state court. You gotta start thinking government Moors. In a case involving the constitutionality of a state, we need states' Moors. Statues may not strictly present a federal question. This court may consider the rejection of such evidence upon the ground in incompetency or immateriality under the statute, showing its scope and meaning in the opinion of the state court. So the opinion comes down to the state court, okay? Judges give interpretations, opinions, what did we learn from? This is the International Court of Justice, Reports of Judgments, Advisories, Opinions, and Orders. When we started studying the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, remember, we learned that. So judges, courts give what? Advisories, opinions, and orders. In cases concerning, this particular case, rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. In Morocco. In Morocco, France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. So the opinion through constant court comes through the state court. Constant court comes through the Moore's state court. The police power of a state, so the state has what? The police power. What does police mean? The policies, procedures, ordinances, codes, the de facto United States of America is using. But Moors have what? Their common law. Law is law. They're using statutes, okay? So when we use our Moore's Constitution, we're talking about common law, alright? So the police power of the state, Moors need to use the police power of the state. What type of state? Moore's states. Embraces such reasonable regulations relating to matters completely within its territory. What's the territory? When Moors put together their Moore's states, it comes with a Constitution. The Constitution outlines the latitude, longitude, which is the territory of that state. And not affecting the people of other states, so what happened? And not affecting the people of other states, meaning state rights of the territory of Moore's states have nothing to do with other people's states. And other people's states don't have nothing to do with the territory of Moore's states. So if the state of, et cetera, wants to give their citizens the jab, ain't got nothing to do with Moore's states. If Moors now, through their allegiance and oath, sign that document to now be a part of their Moore's state, they no longer in the jurisdiction, capitulary regime jurisdiction of the United States Corporation anymore. Now they can reject the jab. But they do it through their state, not as an individual. Notice, they're talking power state, territory of the state, and they're talking other states. They're not talking individual. The judge is trying to tell this Jacobson guy, this is about states. States' rights, not individual rights. That's what I'm trying to let Moors know right now. Let the power of the state represent you, not yourself. You don't march up to HR, your corporation talking about, I'm a Moore, and I'm representing the whole entire Moors empire. No, it doesn't work like that. Let your documents precede you from the state, let the state do the talking. That's what we're learning here. And not affecting the people of other states, established directly by legislative enactments as will protect the public health and safety. Listen, Moors. As will protect the public health and safety. Listen more. When you have your moors state, it will do what? It will establish. Directly by legislative enactments. As will protect the public health and safety of who? Moors. When you have what? Your state territory under your constitution. Remember, he opened up talking about constitution, now he's talking about state. State and the constitution go hand in hand, that's the bylaws. Which a lawful regulation even is based on acknowledged police power of the state, say it, he said it again, right? What polices the nationals? The state. You want to protect your moors nationals, how do you protect them? Through the state, the power of the state, the state has full power, not the individuals. Must always yield in case of conflict with the exercise by the general government. Of any power it possesses under the constitution. Moors want the power to avoid subject matter of the jab? And your power comes from the constitution. Of the state. Why are we studying this? So moors can start understanding, any subject matter. That we deal with. We always deal with it through the state and the state has a court called constable court that will deal with that subject matter. The mode of manner of exercising its police power is wholly within the discretion of the state. Not the individual moor, the state, the moors state. So long as the constitution of the moors state, right here says the United States, but you would say the constitution of your moors state. Is not contravened. Or any right granted or secured thereby not infringed or not exercised as such as arbitrary and. Oppressive matter as to justify the interference of the courts. To prevent wrong and oppression. The liberty secured by the constitution. Moors want liberty, you need a constitution. Now constitution come along with your state, of the United States does not import an absolute right in each person to be at all times. And in all circumstances wholly free from the restraint, nor is it, nor is it. An element in such liberty that one person. Or a minority of persons. Residing in any community and enjoying the benefits of its local government. Should have power to dominate the majority were supported in their actions by the authority of the state. What they just tell you more? The United States just told one of their own citizens of the United States. You can't enforce your rights as an individual. Guess who has the supreme police powers over individuals? The state. So moors need to understand, the liberty secured by the moors constitution. They're saying right here, I'll take that back. The liberty secured by the constitution of the United States does not import an absolute right in each person. To be at all times and in all circumstances wholly free from restraint, nor is it an element in such liberty that one. Person. Or a minority of persons residing in any community. And enjoying the benefits of this local government. Should have power to dominate the majority were supported in their actions by the authority of the state, what does that mean? When moors put together their state. We use the police powers of our moors state. Not even one individual moor. Can have the power over the state. But also at the same time, when moors states are dealing with the de facto United States of America. The United States of America is the minority. The majority state is the moors state, why? Because we have the original jurisdiction according to the treaties. So the United States of America can't make a decision for the majority, who's the majority? That constitution, because we are the indigenous people of the land, based upon our consonquinity. We were here way before fourteen ninety-two, we have the original jurisdiction, you go back and read the treaties, it talks about that, okay? It is within the police power of a state to enact a compulsory vaccination law, stop right there. It is within the police power of the state to enact a compulsory vaccination law. And it is for the legislator and not for the courts to determine, what does that mean? Moors must understand, when you put together a moors state, which has a constitution, that's the bylaw, the courts go by the bylaw, the constitution. What else do the courts go by? The enactment of legislation or laws that state put together. The judges only there to do what? Interpret the law and enforce the law. They're not there to create law, that's the legislator's job, that's the mayor, council, control, depend. The courts only do what? Enforce the law, interpret the law, and give opinion of the law, okay? So what are they saying right here? Listen to what the Europeans are saying. It is within the police power of a state to enact a compulsory vaccination law, so what should moors do? It's in our police power of our state to enact what? A vaccination law that rejects the vaccination. That's our job as legislators. Through our government, through the state. That way now we're creating an application of difference, United States of America got something to say, you take the jab. Moors states say, no, we don't have jabs in our jurisdiction.
We could probably, it would be something like a non-compulsory vaccination law, or something like that.
Non-obligatory would be the word. We're non-obligatory to any injections by a de facto state. We don't care about them sticking the United States of America citizens. But their jurisdiction has nothing to do with the nationals of a moors state. So we're not for the jab, we're not against the jab, it's just non-obligatory to our jurisdiction. So I asked more the question again. What is the name of your state provincial government that possesses a constitution? And its three branches of government that can put together legislation? Or through its constitution, it being the exact bylaw. That says that the jab that moors subjects are non-obligatory to the jab from the United States of America. Why? Because it's about jurisdiction. It's that simple moors. Everything goes back to number one, two, and three. Your nationality, once you nationalize. Now, you sign your allegiance and oath to the jurisdiction of the moors state. Now you're protected in a proper venue, which is constable court. Where did we get this constable court from? Bilateral treaty. Treaty of peace and friendship seventeen eighty-seven when it's fully ratified. Keep in mind, when this was fully ratified, it was not the United States of America that time. Remember, we studied this. At that time, it was what? The Continental Congress. Who had in their constitution was the what? Articles of Confederation. They signed this first treaty. Before George Washington petitioned to C. Muhammad in seventeen eighty-nine. To change the party name to United States of America, let's just get back into the proper consciousness as we read this article twenty. That's very important, you must understand law and history. Article twenty, mother, can you read that for me please?
If any of the citizens of the United States or any persons under their protection. Shall have any disputes with each other, the consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government to enforce its decisions. It shall be immediately granted to him.
Thank you mother. Now let's stop and pause. When was this treaty drafted?
When?
No, where? It was drafted in a Moroccan court. So a Moroccan court wrote this treaty without a proper understanding, okay? If any of the citizens of the United States. Or any persons under their protection. Shall have any dispute with each other. The consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government. Our government to enforce its decisions, it shall be immediately granted to him, what's happening here? We've talked about this before, remember? France was acting as constable court. On behalf of the citizens of the United States, because at this time, the United States didn't have constable court. The United States, or should I say Articles of Confederation. They didn't have constable courts. So the Sultan of Morocco, C. Muhammad, allowed France to come over. Ever since the year seventeen seventy-eight, up until seventeen eighty-six. When this was fully ratified in seventeen eighty-seven, France was still the referee. Dealing with the citizen of the United States or any persons under their protection, who was under their protections? Their citizens. And when their citizens had a problem. Let's say they had a problem with Great Britain, because Britain was still a project, I remember these people are British. The thirteen colonies, thirteen colonies. Were chiefly British. So they had France acting as their constable court. On behalf of C. Muhammad, on behalf of Moroccans. That's why this part makes sense when we read this part. So. If any citizens of the United States or any person under their protection shall have any disputes. With each other, the consul shall decide between the parties. Who was the counsel at that time? France. And whenever the consul shall require any aid, so when France needed some aid, who did France have to go to? They need assistance from our government, who's the government? Morocco. Moroccans had the original jurisdiction. So France was acting as a referee to deal with the United States citizens. At that time, they were the Continental Congress, when they dealing with Great Britain. Or they were dealing with the Iroquois Confederation, so-called Indians, i.e. moors, etc. France were coming in as the referee. So who had the original jurisdiction even over France? Moroccan government. So listen more. How can moors use article twenty and we're not going back to a Moroccan government? The instructions are very clear more. Our government. Who's the our government? Moroccan government, moors states. They should enforce the decisions, what decisions? That came from a court that Morocco had issued that France let France use as constable court. Now moors are now the government enforcing their own constable court decisions. Moors have no sovereign above them. Moors don't have to now capitulate to any other courts above them. Now we can agree to go to the ICJ. But the ICJ does not have jurisdiction over moors. Moors have to agree to what called a compulsory jurisdiction of the ICJ. And we're dealing with a dispute with the United States of America, so if moors states have a dispute with the United States of America. And we've used constable court and constable court hasn't prevailed in dealing with the United States of America, it's still a dispute. We take it now to the UN and the ICJ. But we agreed to go take it there, okay? As now the sending state petitioning the ICJ, but there is no state above. A moors state, none, in our own jurisdiction. Now, we go to article twenty-one, now before we go to article twenty-one, let's understand something. When we read. France versus United States of America. Because the United States of America is in Morocco. We learned this report. That the ICJ said articles twenty and twenty-one. Twenty and twenty-one. Made no distinction between civil court and criminal court. They're all combined, so article twenty and twenty-one are synonymous, that must be understood. You have moors out there thinking they're separate, they're not, ICJ said, on the record. They both deal with civil and criminal matters, okay, so whether you're dealing with civil or criminal matter, you go right into article twenty-one, listen more. If a citizen of the United States should kill or wound a moor. On the contrary, if a moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States. The law of the country shall take place. And equal justice shall be rendered. The consul assisting at the trial. And if any delinquent shall make his escape, the consul should not be answerable for him in any manner whatsoever, so let's go back up here. The ICJ nineteen fifty-two. Use article twenty-one. For any civil and criminal matters, subject matter, you deal with what? The law of the country, what's the country? Morocco. What did we learn at it? The law of the country is what? The government is what? Morocco. So you go to article twenty-one, if a citizen of the United States should kill or wound a moor, don't worry about the death. What should we focus in on as moors? Or on the contrary, if a moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States, the law, here's what moors should understand. The law of the country, what's the country? Morocco. Shall take place. Moroccan courts. And equal justice shall be rendered. Constable courts, the equal justice, the consul assisting at the trial. To let you know right there, who gets to maintain the trial? Our government, moors government. Study, come up to understand more, that we have the original jurisdiction. But we can never, ever enact the jurisdiction without the moors state. We admit the jurisdiction by not having moors states. So moors must answer the question. What is the name of your state provincial government? That can now claim the jurisdiction. That creates the moors state in the constitution, that moors constitution. That now sets up the proper venue, because that proper venue to deal with any difference of application is constable court. Then you get into number four, application of difference, to deal with any subject matter, which happens to be the jab. Based upon this class, so what are we talking about? Moors state status determines our destination, what's the destination? Dealing with the jab. Number one, jurisprudence equals moors nationality. Number two, moors nationality equals jurisdiction. Number three, jurisdiction equals moors states. Number four, moors states equal moors constitutions. Number five, moors constitutions equal moors treaty enforcement. Number six, moors treaty enforcement equals moors constable courts. And number seven, moors constable courts equals remedy of subject matter. So what we have to learn more? The reason why I had us read. That steritices of the United States of America was not so more can use as a defense, because it's just the opposite. Jacobson lost to Massachusetts. He had a pair of feet of five dollars at that time. Today that's equivalent to about a hundred and fifty Federal Reserve notes. The reason why we read it, so A, moors can see they gonna get stuck with the jab if they're ipso dure moors subject. Because you're ipso dure moors subject under the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. Chapter two fifty-four, section seven, circle seven. Moors became naturalized citizens fraudulently. But since they're citizens of the United States of America, it was called capitulation, because we haven't said rejection. How do you say rejection to the jurisdiction of the United States of America? Through your moors constitution and state, that's how you say rejection. Through that application, which is the constitution of the moors state. When we do that, now we use the constitution to our advantage, right? See how the judge opened up, he's using constitution as the instrument. Moors must use the constitution as the instrument to protect our sovereign rights of our jurisdiction of Morocco. As I wrap up. This will be part two, we're gonna do another part on this subject matter of the jab, so. Understand as we're wrapping up, there will be another class on this jab subject matter, okay? And we're talking about how to use the power of constable court through the documentation of constable court to deal with this jab. As we start off in the last class, we learned about state of facts and judicial notice, right? Next class, we'll learn how you deal with an event, they do not adhere to that. Into that judicial notice, okay? We'll learn about that in next class. Here is. Under this report of France versus United States of America, the reference point, the judgment August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two. the judgment August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two. Over here, this is page of that report, this is page two oh two. Okay? Page two oh two of the judgment, the summary of the judgment. You come down to right here. In the absence. Okay, mother, could you read that paragraph for me, please?
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage and practice as a basis for extended counselor jurisdiction and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their cooperation in ministerial decrees binding upon the counsel courts. In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals so long, so long as the extended counselor jurisdiction was being exercised.
Okay, while we're reading this paragraph of the ICJ, remember what I said when we looking at the videos, taking the classes, which is class number fifteen through twenty-one, we go back and study the ICJ report. Right here was one of the paragraphs the ICJ was putting out. If Moors want to enforce their jurisdiction on the United States, they must do it through counsel court and that's the only way to do it. They say it, okay? Watch. So keep in mind, what's the consciousness of what we're reading? They were talking about counsel jurisdiction. In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom usage or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage and practice as a basis for extended counsel court jurisdictions. So what are they saying right there, the ICJ saying? United States of America, not to confuse United States, cannot reject counsel court. And which all largely applicable to the right of assent. That the scent document is the constitution of Moors and the treaties of peace and friendship that the United States of America already agreed to be bound to their treaty as the supreme law of the land. But it continues, watch. It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan law were referred to the United States authorities can rarely be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their cooperation in ministerial decrees binding upon the counsel courts. In that way and in that way only. In what way? What are they talking about? In that way and in that way only. They're talking about what? Only counsel of court can make the United States be bound. In that way and in that way only. You see what the ICJ did for Moors? They told us. The only way for Moors to get out of the capitulation regime of the United States is to use counsel court. But we all know you can't have a counsel court without a state. And you can't have a state without a constitution. So again, in that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals so long as the extended counselor jurisdiction was being exercised. We must exercise jurisdiction because it's the only way. The ICJ has spoken. The United Nations has spoken. Now Moors must understand. We must use the jurisdiction of the Moore's state to enforce counsel court because it's the only way to deal with what? Subject matter of the jab. I end with that. Islam.